Like to call to order the regular meeting of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury for Thursday, September 7th, 2023. You would please take a moment to silence your phones. If there's an item on tonight's agenda that you wish to speak on, I ask that you fill out a little blue card that you'll find there at the front of the room. Once you get it filled out, you can hand it in to anyone here at the staff desk. We're going to have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Gilery. Please stand.
Thank you. Dear Father, I ask for your blessing and prayers over everyone with this fire, with the tornadoes, with the storms, everything, dear Lord. I ask for you to put your hand over everyone and the angels who's going through clean things. Dear Lord, that I ask that everyone tonight, as we have a meeting, we do the right thing for everybody of Calhoun Parish. Dear Lord, thank you for everything. And there's a presence of two or more, we know you are here. Thank you, dear Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery.
No problem.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Amshire.
Here.
Mr. Andropon.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Barkey.
Here.
Vice President Brain was unable to attend this evening, and so was Mr. Burley. Mr. Guillory.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markentell.
Here.
Mr. Rishard.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stelly.
Here.
Mr. Tremonti.
Here.
And President Landry.
Here.
You do have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
Item one is hold a public hearing at 5:45. We'll come back to that. Item two, 2A, adopt a resolutions approving permanent drainage servitude and temporary construction servitude agreements for the Goche Road and Sidney Derwin Road multi-bridge replacement project. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2B, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering services contract between the police jury and law enforcement engineers for the Johnny Borough Road Extension Project. Got a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Barkey. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2C, adopt a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for the McGuire Road Drainage Repair Project. Got a motion by Mr. Gilery, second by Mr. Andropon. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated August 3rd, 2023. Got a motion by Mr. Barkey, second by Mr. Amshire. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3B, adopt a resolution approving the capstone at the Oak Project and an annual payment in lieu of taxes related thereto. Got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Amshire. Any discussion? Any objections? Mr. Gilery.
Yes, I just want to say that this is a great project that's going to be for the seniors, and it's in a good area. I just want to thank you all. It's a great project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3C, adopt a resolution reappointing the Honorable Brian Amshire, Police Juror District Five to serve as the Calhoun Parish Representative on the local, on the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority Board of Directors. That was a math book.
We want to defer for 60 days?
I don't know. I think we already got a motion by Mr. Andropon, and second by Mr. Tremonti. So, Mr. Barris?
That's a long name, man. Maybe one of your first items of business. That's like...
To abbreviate?
God, man. That's great. Great for you. Good news, man. I know you can do it.
Absolutely. Maybe a complete renaming. Any other discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Amshire. 4A, adopt a resolution extending Executive Order 2020-09A, which waived zoning restrictions and fees for temporary dwelling units as a result of Hurricanes Laura and Delta through February 29th, 2024. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4B, adopt the resolution extending Executive Order 2020-15, which waived the free board elevation requirements as a result of Hurricanes Laura and Delta through February 29th, 2024. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, a second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4C, adopt a resolution authorizing the Division of Planning and Development to study the feasibility of reclassifying certain tracts of land in Ward Seven from agriculture and single-family residential to a residential, commercial, or industrial classification, and further to report the findings to the Planning and Zoning Board and the police jury. Got a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5A, adopt a resolution approving an application and sponsor agreement for the family daycare home food program. Motion by Mr. Gilery, second by Mr. Barkey. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5B, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of a subgrant application to the Louisiana Workforce Commission Community Services Block Grant. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move on 6A.
6A, approve payment of all third invoices. Got a motion by Mr. Andropon, second by Mr. Barkey. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6B, advertise for bids for West Calhoun Parish Road and Drainage Rehabilitation. Got a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6C, advertise for bids for striping of various roads. Got a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Barkey. Is there any discussion? Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wainwright, we all clear on, we don't, about what we think about zippers, right? Want all those zippers down the middle of the road. All clear. Right on.
No zippers down the middle of the road. Okay. That was clear. Is there any further discussion?
I guess Carlos is the only place with zippers on the road.
Yeah. Okay. No, about, about an eighth of Carlos.
Well, I hope you get your zipper issue worked out, Mr. Barris.
That might require more discussion than what we can do here tonight. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6D, advertise for requests for proposals for uniform rental services.
Move on 6D.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6E, advertise for bids for one 2023 or newer mid-sized crew cab pickup truck for use by the Division of Engineering and Public Works. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7A, Calhoun Parish Public Safety Communications District.
Move to appoint Mr. William Wilke.
I have a motion to appoint Mr. William Wilke by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Markentell. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7B, Community Center and Playground District Number Three of Ward Seven. Had a motion by Mr. Markentell to appoint Mr. Derek Dureo. Is that correct, Mr. Markentell? And a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7C, Consolidated Gravity Drainage District Number One. Need a motion to approve as printed on the agenda. Had a motion by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Markentell. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7D, Recreation District Number One of Ward Eight. The appointment of Mr. Brandon James Perkins is deferred for 60 days by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Ward One Economic Development Board.
Move to reappoint, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rishard and a second by Mr. Markentell to reappoint Ms. Joanne Fizette. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7F, Ward One Fire Protection District Number One. Had a motion by Mr. Rishard, a second by Mr. Markentell to reappoint Mr. Ernie Burnthorn and Mr. John Veroni. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7G, Ward Seven Fire Protection District Number One. Had a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Tremonti, to reappoint Mr. Jerry Nichols and also Mr. Justin Carrier. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7H, Waterworks District Number One of Ward One. Got a motion by Mr. Rishard, second by Mr. Markentell to reappoint Mrs. Donna DeBarge. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7I, Waterworks District Number Four of Ward Four. Got a motion by Mr. Andropon, a second by Mr. Markentell to reappoint Mr. O.L. Johnny Johnson III. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7J, Waterworks District Number Eleven of Wards Four and Seven. Got a motion by Mr. Andropon and a second by Mr. Markentell to reappoint Mr. Mike Guidry. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7K, Workforce Development Board. Got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Stelly, to reappoint, or to appoint Ms. Tristan Hager. Is that correct, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Number eight is just advise items to various boards, and we will now recess for three minutes and come back to do number one. All right. Call the meeting back to order. Back to number one, hold a public hearing at 5:45 PM, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said property should not be condemned. We have number 1A, 4989 Shelton Road in Vinton. Okay, is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1A, 4989 Shelton Road? Is that 1A, Ms. Jessica? It's not? Thank you.
Move to condemn.
I got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Rishard to condemn and remove in 30 days. We have any discussion? Mr. Barris?
Mr. Robinson, what? We just never, never heard anything more. That's the one that wanted to save the dear precious lumber.
Correct. The lady called me probably about two weeks ago and said that it would cost her way too much to repair, so it's just not, it's not feasible.
She understands what that means then?
Yes.
What's she gonna do with that number?
That's a good question.
I'm kidding. I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1B, 1458 Foxborough Drive in Moss Bluff. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak on 1B, 1458 Foxborough Drive in Moss Bluff? Okay, I had a motion by, by Mr. Rishard and a second by Mr. Markentell to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1C, 1916 South Perkins Ferry Road in Moss Bluff. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1C, 1916 South Perkins Ferry Road in Moss Bluff?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rishard and a second by Mr. Markentell to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, 1D, 950 Park Road in Moss Bluff.
Move to condemn.
We do have a speaker. Mr. Kenneth McManus Jr., if you would, just state your name and address for the record.
Kenneth Ray McManus. I'd like to just get an extension on being able to tear it. I mean, we've already started the disassembly. We've had several people, we've paid several people to tear it down, and they keep getting harassed until they finally just quit.
So, your, your ask is for more time to tear it down or more time to repair?
For a little more time to tear it down. Yeah.
Okay. What did you? Mr. Markentell.
Sir?
You said it kept getting harassed.
Yeah.
By the parish?
By, by all kind of people, different people. I just, I don't know. I didn't get the whole story, but that's, that's what I got from him. He just kept being bothered and finally just gave up.
That's odd. Mr. Rishard?
Yeah. I live right down the road, and I watched the progress go on several times. I saw one person.
Yeah.
Go there and tear down a little bit, and then I wouldn't see him for a couple of days.
Right.
He'd come back, he'd start a little fire, burn a little bit of trash.
Well, we stopped that. We got a visit from DEQ that said, so we stopped that.
Your property goes how far in the back of that mobile home that we're looking at?
Approximately 50 feet past the mobile home.
Because they had another old mobile home behind that. Is that correct?
That's two lots down.
Is that your property also?
Sir?
Is that your property also?
Um, let's see. I own the corner of Park Road.
Right.
And I corner, own the property catatonic to Park Road.
Right. Right. And both of those properties are in that condition, right?
They are. And we've been slowly working to clean them up. It's just heat.
I've been there since 1980, and since 1980, it's been a problem.
Yeah. We've been there since 1984.
Okay. That corner's been a problem, and I, I don't see much going on there, you know?
It's, it's been, it's, it's just been too hot this summer to get out there and do anything. As soon as it starts to cool off, we'll get back out there. I can get out there with the tractor and get it torn down. I just need a little more time.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind giving him more time, but I'd give you 15 days.
I need more than 15 days. I'd recently had shoulder surgery about five weeks ago, so I'm, I'm down and out for at least a couple more weeks before I'm able to really go do anything. And the heat's still, I'm not going to get out there and kill myself trying to clean up a piece of property, to put it that way. I've already had heat stroke once during the hurricane.
Oh, I understand.
And it just, I mean, the goal is now that it's starting to cool off, we'll get out there early in the morning, do what we can.
It ain't cool off no more, but I'm with the deal, Mr. President. We'll stick with mine.
Okay, we still have some more speakers. Mr. Andropon?
This was along the same lines as what Mr. Markentell had asked. When you said harass, I mean, define, define harass. I mean, in what, what way were they being harassed?
Just the police would come by. I mean, he's not a model citizen, let's put it that way.
Oh.
Okay. But he was there working, so the police would come by. He'd just, just, just little things all the time, and finally he just gave up. He said, you know, I've had enough. I don't want to...
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Tremonti?
It seems like letting us go ahead and condemn it would help you out and tear it down, since you had shoulder, shoulder surgery. And, you know, it's, it's too hot for you to get out there. I can understand that.
Yeah.
But it seems like we'd be helping you by tearing that down, sir, and getting it cleaned up.
What I worry about is what it would cost to have it done, and would they finish the job?
Oh, they'd finish the job. Yes, sir. They'd finish it.
I beg your pardon. Sorry, but I...
But just looking at the pictures, it looks like, you know, several other properties that I've dealt with in Sulfur, that when it's grown up like that, and you have rodents and, and things that are out there, snakes, so the people living all around it shouldn't have to suffer any longer. It's been, I don't know, three years since the hurricane, and we're offering to condemn it for you. That's just...
I just would like the opportunity to finish tearing it down and get it cleaned up myself, without having to, without having to go and pay y'all back for the tearing down. I mean, I'm capable of doing it myself. That's the whole point.
I yield back.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tremonti. Mr. Crane, do you have anything to add, sir?
Yes, sir. I was just going to say, I, I would recommend, the staff is recommending that you condemn the structure because it's an unsafe structure.
Right.
And I think, you know, depending on the timeframe that you give the property owner to remove the structure, that's, that's certainly up to you. And then, we have some extensions built into the ordinance that we can allow them to, you know, if they're progressing on the project or getting it removed, we can, we can work with the property owner to get that or have an extension done. So, just, just know that you have that available too. But at least I would recommend that you condemn it.
It's, it's absolutely condemned.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Okay, sir, you don't have the floor any longer. Okay, so, Mr. Rishard, if I remember correctly, you had made a, you made a motion to condemn, but then you, you did speak about the extra time. Do you want to make the motion to condemn and make it 45 days instead of 30 days? Or do you just want it to be 30 days and then Mr. Crane's staff will work with him as long as progress has been made?
I'll go with administration and move to condemn, then go with the administration.
Okay, so the motion's going to be to condemn and remove within 30 days. I have a motion by Mr. Rishard. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Stelly. All right, is there any further discussion? Mr. Barris?
You're getting some time. You're getting the time you're asking for. I don't, I really don't think you took this ser, seriously coming up here with an excuse like, well, they were just getting harassed. And then it turns out it's because of the people you hire or wanted or whatever. It is not our problem, man.
I agree. I agree.
It's got to be done.
It, it does. It needs to be done. I don't disagree with you.
I hate that you, you know, you're rehabbing your, your shoulder, but...
Yes, I am.
But, you know, 1980, and it's...
Well, that, that house hasn't been there since 1980.
But either way, that, we're not going to, we're not going to take the harassment excuse in 30 days. Okay? You got to do something. You got, you got to start headed in that direction.
Right. I understand.
Mr. Gilery?
I just want to ask, Mr. Rishard, the one next to it, is that part of the same property? The one I, one E, is that part of the same property with the other two trailers?
Different owner, Mr. Gilery.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Different owners.
This is just catatonic. I think he might own the same properties. It's catatonic.
There was an old mobile home there, and it's still debris there.
It's, it's almost completely torn down, and that'll be our next project as soon as we get Park 950 cleaned up.
Mr. Crane, is that piece of property also included with that address, or that would be a different address?
Well, the next item on the agenda under 1E is 972 Park, but I'm not sure if that's the same.
That, that's not mine. That's somebody else's. That's two, that's two houses down from that.
I'm not sure. I'd have to check.
Yeah, I, I don't want you to have to go through the same problem you're going through now, that administration has to go out for that piece of property that, that's adjoining that way, you know? Where it could save you some, some hardship.
Yeah. No, I only have the one on here now, nine fifty Park Road, for today.
I yield back.
All right, thank you, Mr. Richard. Okay, is there any, we had a motion and a second condemning and removing thirty days. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McManus. Good luck to you, sir. And work with the staff.
Okay.
What, you just, you need to have progress within thirty days.
It will.
You know, if there's not, well then,
Yeah.
they're gonna tear it down for you. If there is, please contact Mr. Crane's office, and they will work with you, because we'd rather you do it than, than us. Thank you. We got another speaker? No, not till G. All right, one E, nine seventy-two Park Road in Moss Bluff.
Move to condemn.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one E, nine seventy-two Park Road in Moss Bluff? Okay, I had a motion by Mr. Richard to condemn and remove in thirty days, and a second by Mr. Markantel. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One F, six hundred Hackberry Street in Lake Charles. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one F, six hundred Hackberry Street in Lake Charles? I have a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Stelly, to condemn and remove within thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, one G, thirty-five oh nine Heard Road in Lake Charles.
Move to condemn.
Uh, we do have a speaker. And I apologize, I cannot make out the handwriting. Wayne Dong?
Mr. Dong.
Yes. If you could, come up to the podium, to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Wei Jin Dong, and my address is thirty-five oh nine Heard Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana, seven zero six zero five. And I, uh, I'm requesting for an extension, uh, for the deadline to repair it.
Mr. Abshire?
Mr. Dong, I've driven by the, the property.
Yeah, yeah.
And look at, at the building. It, that building, I don't believe is repairable. What are your, what are your plans for this extension?
Well, um, well, to be honest, I'm balancing the cost of repair versus rebuilding. And, uh, it has been such a long time. I realize it has been such a long time. So, on one hand, I feel that if I repair it in, in the future, if I have to rebuild it, it will be additional cost. So, I have talked to the, uh, Ms. Amanda Butler at the zoning office, and also Sherry Trehan in the, uh, planning office or, or permit office, uh, in the parish. And she, the both of them have told me that you have to make the decision. We are not your financial advisor. But it's, anyway, in short, I do not want to waste anybody's time. It's my fault not to make such a decision early, so.
You've had three years.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And you and I have spoken on several occasions over the last three years about other issues.
It was regarding the other issue. Oh, that's another issue, actually.
We're not gonna address that issue.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Let's not to address the, the other issue, yes.
So, I don't feel like additional, an additional thirty days is gonna, is gonna do you any good. I, I feel like we're gonna, we should go ahead and condemn the property today. And then, if you get a plan together in the next thirty days, and you decide you're gonna repair the building, then you can get with administration, and they can talk, they can work with you.
Okay.
Mr. Crane, is that? We, we won't be able to uncondemn it once it's condemned.
So, if you condemn it tonight, it's gonna be condemned, and it will have to be removed. If you choose to allow him to repair it, then he needs to submit a detailed list of those repairs. And then we would come back to you and ask you to allow him to do that.
We're talking about that building right there.
Um, it, it's a structure that is, it's pretty far gone. It's gonna be another one of these that's really cost prohibitive to repair that structure. We've seen it time and time again.
Mr. Abshire, you still have the floor, sir?
I don't, if that's the case, then I think we need to go ahead and just condemn the property. I don't see that you have, you're, you're not gonna have sufficient time to make a decision, and I don't feel like the prop, the, the building is repairable.
Well, I talked to, uh, to contractors, and they said that we can repair it for you, no problem, but you have to pay the money. So, that's what I heard from the contractor. The one is, uh, 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 is called, um, uh, Elaf. His name is Elaf. And he said that certainly anything, we can repair it for you.
I yield.
If you can give me an extension, then it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, is there any further, any other questions? I don't know. Do we have a motion on the floor?
We do.
Did you make a motion, Mr. Abshire? What was it, condemning and removing thirty days?
Yes, sir.
And we have a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Okay, is there any further discussion?
I just have-
Mr. Tremonti.
Thank you, sir. Is that it? Is there another picture? What are we looking at?
Thing about the collapse.
That, yeah.
I think that's it, yeah, with the wall kicked out and the-
So, is part of the building gone?
Yeah.
Yep.
I yield back.
Are you, are you okay?
I would have to agree with Mr. Abshire.
Okay.
It's nearly gone.
So, we have the motion, the second. Is there any further, uh, discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir. You're, the property or the, the structure has been condemned, and you have thirty days to remove it? And then, if that doesn't happen, we will send out, they send out contractors, and, and they bid on the job, and whoever's the cheapest gets the, gets the job, and then they will tear it down and remove it for you. Or if you do it within thirty days, then that part does not happen.
So, even I wanted to repair is not allowed?
It is now condemned. It cannot be repaired. To repair it, you would have to get a permit, and you can't get a permit on something that's condemned. So, at this point, you're, you have two options. You either tear it down and remove it yourself, or the parish is gonna hire a contractor, and they're gonna tear it down and remove it. That, that's your two options.
Okay.
Mr. Landry.
Uh, Mr. Crane?
The other option too is for him to purchase, I mean, he can build a new structure, you know, in replace of that, but he's gotta get a permit, obviously, to redo that, to do that. He just can't, this structure's gonna have to be removed.
Right.
So, they have to be done within thirty days?
Yes, sir.
Uh, to rebuild a new structure in thirty days?
Yeah.
This, this structure has to be, will have to be removed in thirty days.
Okay, and then rebuild, uh, or-
Have to resubmit plans to us so we can issue a permit for you to rebuild a new structure?
Now, that, what's the timeframe for that?
Yes.
Okay, I think it's clear. So, if, and if you have any other questions, call Mr. Crane's staff, and they'll be happy to, to help you, or call Mr. Crane. All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna go to one H. Uh, there's no action necessary. The structure has been demolished. One I, eighty-nine forty-five Sissy Lane in Lake Charles.
Don't move.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one I, eighty-nine forty-five Sissy Lane in Lake Charles? Got a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Lewis, to condemn and remove in thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One J, sixty twenty-two Mary Ann Street in Lake Charles. I have a, was there anyone in the audience here to speak on one J, sixty twenty-two Mary Ann Street in Lake Charles? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Stelly, a second by Mr. Andrew Pont to, it was to defer for how long? For thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One K, thirty-one eighty Hacker Road in LeBlu Settlement. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one K, thirty-one eighty Hacker Road in LeBlu Settlement?
Move to condemn. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, a second by Mr. Tremonti to, uh, that the structure be condemned or removed in thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One L, Move on L. eleven sixty-seven Highway three eighty-nine in Dequincy. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one L, eleven sixty-seven Highway three eighty-nine in Dequincy? I have a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Richard, to condemn and remove in thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One M, seven zero seven five Barnacle Road in Carless. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one M, seven oh seven five Barnacle Road in Carless? Have a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Richard, to condemn and remove within thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One N,
Move to defer for thirty days.
twenty-four oh seven Durasso Drive in Westlake. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one N, twenty-four oh seven Durasso Drive in Westlake? Have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Tremonti, to condemn and remove in thirty days.
To defer for thirty days.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just making sure we're paying attention, right?
To defer for thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One O, north of six-ten Evans Road in Sulphur. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak on one O, north of six-ten Evans Road in Sulphur?
Move to condemn.
Move to condemn. Got a motion by Mr. Richard to condemn and remove in thirty days, and a second by Mr. Markantel. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. One P, twenty-two twenty-two Hickory Street in Sulphur. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one P, twenty-two twenty-two Hickory Street in Sulphur?
Move to condemn.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, a second by Mr. Smith, to condemn and remove in thirty days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Stelly?
Concerning condemnation?
Absolutely.
On the FEMA assist on condemnations, where, where are we on that? The FEMA assist, but isn't there a program where FEMA's offering assistance for the removals? There's still a lot of them out there.
Mr. Stelly, uh, Mr. Richard Shampo in our office is dealing with the entire PPDR list, what you're talking about there. In all honesty, I'll just have to get her to get with you and give you an update on any specific properties you might be interested with. The, the sort of overview is there's a tremendous amount of red tape that is being cut through and gone through and everything. I can't really give you an ETA when the first one would be done, but it is progressing. Those that are on the list and somewhat approved to be on the list, it is moving forward. It's just a mountain of things to do in advance. But I'll have her get in touch with you.
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Where's adjourned?